Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tammy Amy Trail East, 3rd Floor Naples, Florida 34112, December 13th, 2016 at 9:00 AM. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, BCC Chair. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2. Commissioner Bert Saunders, District 3. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4, CRAB Vice Chair, TDC Chair. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5. Notice: All persons wishing to speak prior to an agenda item must register prior to presentation of the agenda item to be addressed. All registered speakers will receive up to 3 minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Public comment on general topics not on the current or future agenda to be heard is no sooner than 1:00 PM or at the conclusion of the agenda whichever occurs first. Requests to address the Board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the day of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this board will need a recording of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceeding is made which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 as amended by Ordinance 200405 and 200724 requires that all lobbyists shall before engaging in any lobbying activities including by now limiting to addressing the Board, register with the clerk to the Board at the Board and Minutes Record Department. If you're a person with a disability who needs any accommodation in order to participate in this proceedings, you're entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact Facilities Management Division at 3335 East Tammy Amy Trail Suite or call 252-8380. Assistant Listening Devices for the Hearing Imperative available in Facilities Management Division. Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon to 1:00 PM. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Item 1A: Invocation by Reverend Kurt Anderson of Naples Community Church. Item 1B: Swearing In Ceremony of District 2 Commissioner Solis, District 3 Commissioner Saunders, and District 5 Commissioner McDaniel. Swearing in to be administered by Collier Circuit Judge Christine H. Greider. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. Item 2A: Approval of Today's Regular Consent and Summary Agenda as amended. Ex parte disclosure provided by Commission members on consent and summary agendas. Item 2B: October 25th, 2016, BCC Regular Meeting Minutes. Item 2C: November 15th, 2016, BCC Regular Meeting Minutes. Item 3: Service Awards. Item 3A: Employees. Item 3B: Advisory Board Members. Item 3C: Retirees. Item 4: Proclamations. Item 4A: Proclamation Designating January 7th through 15th, 2017, the Kindness Awareness Week in the Collier County to be accepted by Bob Votruba and his dog Bogart. Item 5: Presentations. Item 5A: Presentation of the Collier County Business of the Month for December 2016 by Lake Michigan Credit Union of Florida to be accepted by Miranda Shaky, District Manager, Lake Michigan Credit Union of Florida, Susan Kuhar, County Executive, Greater Naples Chamber, and Bethany Sawyer, Membership Engagement Specialist, Greater Naples Chamber. Item 5B: Recommendation to recognize Melissa Pearson, Contract Administration Specialist, Growth Management Division Department as November 2016 Employee of the Month. Item 6: Public Petitions. Item 7: Public Comment Not on General Topics, Not on the Current or Future Agenda. Item 7 to be heard no sooner than 1:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Item 8: Border Zoning Appeals. Item 8 to be heard no sooner than 1:30 PM unless otherwise noted. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. Item 9 to be heard no sooner than 1:30 PM unless otherwise noted. Item 9A: This item has been continued to the January 10th, 2017, BCC Meeting. This item requires that ex parte disclosure be provided. Commission members, should a hearing be held on this item, all participants are to be sworn in. Recommendation to approve an Ordinance amending Ordinance #95-74, the Naples Heritage Golf and Country Club Plan Union Development amending Ordinance #2004-41, the Collier County Land Development Code by amending the appropriate zoning atlas map or maps, changing the zoning classification of additional 5.2 plus or minus acres of land, zone rural agriculture to Naples Heritage Golf Club Country Club PUD by revising the property description by adding recreation areas track day by revising development standards by amending the master plan and by adding tennis center conceptual. This subject property consisting of 506 3 acres located south of Davis Boulevard, west of Collier Boulevard in Section 349 and 10 Township 50 South Range, east Collier County, Florida, PUDZ. Item 9B: This item continued to the January 10th, 2017, BCC Meeting. Item 9C: This item continued to the January 10th, 2017, BCC Meeting. Item 9D: This item to be heard at 11:00 AM. This item requires that ex parte disclosure be provided by Commission members should a hearing be held on this item. All participants required to be sworn in. Recommendation to approve an Ordinance amending Ordinance #92-08, the Courthouse Shadows Plan Union Development by increasing the maximum square footage by the shopping area center outparcels by 18,000 square feet for a total of 165,000 square feet of floor area by amending Ordinance #2004-41, the Collier County Land Development Code by amending the appropriate zoning atlas map or maps, changing the zoning classification of additional 0.35 acres of land, zone commercial intermediate district in the mixed-use subdistrict of Gateway Triangle Mixed Use District overly C3. Do the Courthouse Shadows PUD by adding a membership warehouse club with associated liquor store use and auxiliary facility with fuel pumps as permitted use by revising the development standards and amending the master plan and adding deviations to properties located at South Side US 41, opposite Airport Pulling Road. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. Item 10A: Recommendation to direct the county attorney to advertise and bring back to the Board an ordinance that will implement 12-month moratorium on new applications for developer orders uses authorized by the Commercial 4, C4, Commercial 5, C5 zoning districts as well as gas stations, pawn shops, car washes, and all commercial districts on both sides of US 41 from Palm Street Commercial Drive US 41 intersection to the Price Street US 41 intersection and direction staff to develop, bring forward land development code amendments to promote the vision for the East Trail Corridor Study. Note by county attorney approval, this item will immediately commence on the moratorium period pending future Board action or ordinance. Item 10B: Discussion with the Board of County Commissioners to consider support for pre-establishing funding for the Conservation Collier Program for continued access, protection, restoration, management, environmental sense of lands in Collier County. Item 10C: Discussion with the Board of County Commissioners concerning the collection of data and analysis for future establishment of business regulatory ombudsman to stream by rules, zoning regulations, ordinances, policies, supporting entrepreneurship and business growth in Collier County. Item 10D: Request that the Board of County Commissioners enter into a memorandum of understanding with Clerk of Circuit Court and Comcoroller. Item 11: County Managers Report. Item 11A: This item to be heard at 10:00 AM. Recommendation to evaluate the initial feasibility of developing a professional baseball spring training facility through a public-private partnership and request guidance in future direction. Item 11B: Recommendation to award contract #16-7018, Logan Boulevard Extension from Azalea Drive to Lee County Line to Benos Incorporated, amount of $4,444,063. Item 11C: Recommendation to approve Amendment #1 to Agreement 15-6447 with Kelly Brothers Inc. and corresponding change order #4 resulting from a cost-saving initiative proposal from the contract to reduce the contract amount by $545,109 for construction Chocolaki Bridge Project. Item 11D: Recommendation to award bid #16-6688, Northeast Recycling Drop Off Center to Right Construction Group in the amount of $7,3141 for construction Northeast Recycling Drop Off Center. Item 11E: Recommendation to authorize a 3-year Microsoft Software License agreement from SHI International Corporation for Microsoft Software licenses in the estimated amount of $1,860,000 authorized additional software license purchase for the term of the agreement utilizing State of Florida Contract 4323000-1502. Item 12: County Attorneys Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or the Community Redevelopment Agency. Item 15: Staff and Commission, General Communications. Item 15A: Current BCC Workshop Schedule. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a Board member, that item or item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586. Item 11, county managers report 11A, this item to be heard at 10:00 a.m. Recommendation to evaluate the initial feasibility of developing a professional baseball spring training facility through a public private partnership and request guidance in future direction. 11B, recommendation to our contract number 16-7018 Logan Boulevard extension from Azalea Drive to Lee County line to binos incorporated around a $4,444,063. 11C, recommendation to approve amendment number one to agreement 15-6447 with Kelly Brothers Inc. and corresponding change order number four resulting from a cost-saving initiative proposal from the contract to reduce in contract amount by $545,109 for construction Chocolatier Bridge project. 11D, recommendation to our bid number 16-6688 Northeast Recycling Drop Off Center to write construction group in the amount of $7,341 for construction Northeast Recycling Drop Off Center. Item 11E, recommendation to authorize a three-year Microsoft enterprise agreement from SHI International Corporation for Microsoft software licenses and the estimated amount of $1,860,000 authorized additional software license purchase for the term of the agreement utilizing state of Florida contract 4323000-15-02. Item 12, county attorneys report. Item 13, other constitutional officers. Item 14, airport authority and or the community redevelopment agency. Item 15, staff and commission general communications. 15A, current BCC workshop schedule. Item 16, consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussion of each item. If discussion is desired by a board member, that item or item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586.